That's.
It's merely in the.
Hmm.
Yeah, fifty two.
Oh, you're ruining it.
I don't know. I think they gave me a prison. I was forgiven though.
I remember.
They never found a body, so I was free.
Very.
This is the number.
Do you want to go with the chair? Yeah. One for next one. No. That's a big relief.
I don't want to, I don't want to.
You don't want to look at it?
No way.
That's a big relief.
In another way. Every and good.
And be great. When's the last time you seen like a new? You know, whole horses a little bit of the thing about it.
So.
You know, all, all.
Over by alley we did.
Did you?
Yeah, we ran all in the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, I make water.
For him. Oh, really, Bob?
Big one.
Yeah.
You remember? When you're kind of young, San Diego Farms right there.
Yeah, I remember that.
There used to be a stall there when I was.
Did you write it? No kidding? That's okay, that's fair. That's a good part of it, don't get it. You don't, you don't have the visions though, we're just. There was Sam Duran, Sam Dula, and Sedera. You know, there's like all these names that are all the same. They're all the same there, man.
I remember, uh, I was sixteen. Took some horses down to, uh, Florida.
Mm-hmm.
Well, hell. And, uh, San Diego Motorhome and his Mercedes moved to a place or something.
Yeah, yeah.
What it was, it was like two, three hours down the road.
Yeah.
And there, and took the horses down.
Yeah, sorry, I got things.
You got them, oh, yeah.
Good on you.
Excellent.
I don't worry about it. We didn't say no.
He goes, well, I guess you're driving Mercedes with five hundred and a cell. Sixty years.
Yeah.
Like he.
This Earl Plainer guy?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
You fly where you want.
Well, Ben said he's got somebody else coming.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's here.
Is this guy?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful.
I call him Ben.
Hey, hi, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Israel.
Good evening.
You call him.
I like.
Bud Junior.
I like your Hawaiian shirt, the spirit of, uh.
You know, it was.
The one mother.
Yeah, it's gonna be sixty-one today.
Yeah.
And I, so I thought about it and I said, you know, if it was made, if it was made and it's gonna be sixty-one, we'd be wearing shorts.
Yes, I know. Sixty-one hour freezing.
I still have my shorts on, just had to put them on.
Yeah.
That's just the speed of life, you know.
Yeah.
Joel.
What do you think this one is?
I'm trying to know about.
I know, I'm sure you do.
In person before.
That's a monster, huh?
Where does it bend? Uh, he says he's gonna need that, or should be.
It's not gonna be cheap.
Okay. There he is, you know, there he is, uh, hey, Mr. Joel.
Pretty weird, right?
Yeah.
They were. Hello, everyone.
We were all just talking.
Were you?
Only good thing, yeah, yeah.
That's me.
Well, me and Pete.
Right, man.
I was a gold servant.
There you go.
I know what's going on, man.
I got my curb, I'll give you my curb when I get back from my office.
Did I, he's got a little.
Alright, well, next time.
I can do, okay.
So this one got pulled, got pulled, they didn't.
Yeah.
I was, I was just told this.
I think we're like, alright.
I said, I'll follow this back. This should be today in the bar, and they said.
Ah, you're just.
Yeah, so it looks like, so we have none of here. Let's sue.
So I'm glad to see you. Just preparing for the NASCAR races.
I kept Phil's statement on here so that we could talk about it.
The, the?
Which is on, it's on.
Oh, definitely denied it, and they're always, uh, I've not given it to them.
So what are you driving now?
Ask them.
If they ask.
Yeah. Your wonderful wife's taking care of it.
I, uh.
Good.
Real good. So that was, that was actually.
The same, the same. Real estate.
I think Caitlyn had one, but I don't.
I love us more so than Caitlyn.
Those are at the German, yeah, or something, German truck. I know. She's a.
Almost.
Yeah, they just, they just.
Thirty-eightish last week.
Where he is.
What would I have over here in, uh, during China?
Yeah, right.
We have to next year. Yeah, I know.
So. Uh, he was another player, Rose, his core impression. Gender repale. I don't think he did much in your county.
Good. Still looking pretty good, too.
I think he was.
Yeah. So, does it, do you know?
I work at.
What about you?
No, I work with, uh, I work under.
To our house every single day.
So I heard.
Sometimes he'll call, he calls every day.
You're part of the world.
I was tired, I'm not coming in.
Don't we also.
After we got eighty, eighty-nine, now he's not as much. Rushing it off in the morning.
I know, I still must.
You get out of the house at six o'clock, I'm like.
No, this is.
What are you on, Rush? Where'd you go? Where'd you go?
Yeah. Okay, here's one thing, here's a question.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, yeah.
It's looks like. In the ordinance, there's a setback requirement.
But they go to the.
Hundreds of fifteen.
He's still getting.
From any residential district. And they asked me.
He's, he's working in, uh, Mark, I remember in nine, nine, sixteen, Pinehurst, nine, south. Yeah, all the.
And West Pinehurst, right there.
And, uh, so we got all those cut down.
Setback at two fifty from any residential requirements. So they asked me about. I told them for sure you have to move.
This is true, because he had one.
To comply with two fifteen, you're only here in the south. But they asked me about the rate of here.
Yeah, this one, right now. It isn't something.
Right, so.
Yeah, I don't think that would be part.
I don't think that would be part of the.
Fifty-five.
Right, that's what I told them, would be infrastructures as well.
Oh, it's weird, that, oh, it would be that work.
Oh, yeah.
So they asked me for an interpretation.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
And I said, here's my interpretation, but the ultimate authority is gonna be. So I can tell you this, but don't.
Okay, so making order. Can you answer the flag, please? My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, start with the roll call.
Roll call, Dan Miller.
Here.
Tom Wise.
Here.
Andrew Darian. And Phil Bellinger.
Here.
Nick Holden.
Here.
Lance School.
President.
George Nash.
Okay. Can I give you a motion for the approval of the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll take it.
All favor.
Aye.
Can you vote? Okay. About the approval of the minutes September tenth, twenty twenty five. What moment?
I'll make the motion. To approve that. May I some?
September tenth.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Can you vote? Okay, we're real long, public comments are either not and on tonight's agenda.
Here for shakeup, so, living the village. Um, so, you know, I gotta say, this morning I really listened to and watched the last month's meeting. And all I could think of was a very rude phrase to describe when we get to about, because this is on YouTube, you can watch it too. We're gonna get about twenty-four minutes into twenty-seven minutes in. But I'll use this term circle of self-congratulation that went on here. Because Mr. Israel brought up, he had a picture of the sign, uh, the metamora sign that's just down the road here. And saying, oh, gosh, you know, Dave Best wants to lead by example, you know, what are we gonna do about enforcing this? That sign, replacing that sign's been in the works for a year and Dave Best knew that extremely well. Because he is on the DDA with Mr. Holden here. And so that just seemed like a real stunt to bring that up right before, and I already knew that that sign was about to be replaced. Now, it still hasn't been replaced, even though Mr. Holden said, you know, a week or two it would be replaced. It still hasn't been, still, I just drove by it. But, um, that just really seemed like a stunt. And I'm wondering what in the job description of zoning, the zoning administrator involves so much praise, effusive praise for the supervisor, praise from board, the young men on the board. Because to me, that discredits you in your job, Mr. Israel. When you are here praising them, it shows bias. We've already seen in this township, a great deal of bias towards the best family. And the best family and friends plan is what we're on here, because these jobs that come up on these boards don't get advertised out, we don't even know people are vacating their seats. Mr. Best picks friends and family to fill these jobs. So it's, it's just really not a good look at all, and that kind of discredits you. Um, and, you know, last night I was at the village planning commission. And I heard this Dave Best phrase, it's easier to, to ask for forgiveness than permission. Because somebody on that board wants to build something, and he said he came to you, you can watch the meeting, he came to you, and I appreciated his candor. And you was like, hey, you can kind of, you know, these things get built sometimes, and then you ask for forgiveness. Really? Really, again, watch the meetings, you'd be sad, I appreciate that you'd be honest about it, thank you.
Alright, anyone else have any public comment? Bill, you don't have to, you stay right there.
Hey, thank you, Bill Holden, Township and Village of Metamora still. Um, I just wanted to say, I find it very interesting. And that particular fault findings continuously at the meeting. Living and working and owning properties and paying taxes on all of the above, I truly do appreciate the hard work that is being done by almost every board and administrators and things like that. And my gosh, if we can't have fun joking around on certain things, man, what kind of country are we coming into? That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Okay, uh, we're gonna close the, uh, comments and everything else. I was gonna reopen the text amendment, the public hearing. Section fifteen twenty-two sign regulations. Ben, if you wanna.
Yes. Alright, so let me start off here, I apologize, um, I updated this draft, but then I think I sent Sue the wrong draft. So this is the same draft that we looked at last month. And last month, you'll probably remember, we had two outstanding points to finalize. One was freestanding sign height in Ag, and we agreed that we're just gonna leave that as is. Um, it used to be six before we started this update process, and we're gonna leave it at six, what we agreed upon. And then the last, uh, point was the maximum area for wall signage, and we agreed that we were gonna put that at one-twenty. Um, so I apologize that those two are not finalized in the draft that's in front of you tonight, but everything else should be. Um, so I really don't have too much more to say, we went through this last month. Um, if the planning commission has any further comments or questions, I'm happy to walk through with them, Joe and I are happy to walk through with them tonight. Uh, the next step is to make a motion to send this to the township board with a recommendation that this text amendment gets approved.
Well, see, this is called immediate, anyone have anything you wanna say?
I do.
Okay, Mr. Israel.
I want to appreciate everybody that came and worked on this with us, we cut a lot out of the sign ordinance to make it easier for Metamora, uh, residents, businesses, and simpler for the zoning administrator to enforce. And without your help, in the, the past year that we spent on this, and also our planner, Mr. Benton here, who I think does an outstanding job.
A lot of where they come from.
Yeah.
No more sign permits at planning commission, too, I know we talked about that.
Well, yeah.
But we're gonna encourage them to put it on their applications when they come in front of you. And I, I think that the, uh, planning commission should encourage them also to run the same wavelength.
Did you have, did you highlight that they should put the address on the sign?
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's in here, that's in here.
Okay, you did that.
Right, that's her in here.
Okay. You want a public comment, uh, we'll close the hearing on the sign amendment, so. Okay, I guess we need a motion to send the township board that will go ahead and review it and approve it. If they so choose. For now, roll call vote, we get to, so I'm gonna make a motion.
So this will be a motion to recommend to the township board to approve the text amendment to section fifteen twenty-two sign regulations.
Perfect, yeah.
Do you like to repeat all of that in the motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I didn't know, because she already.
Just like she said it.
I'll, I'll make a motion, can I read? I'll make a motion that we. That way don't have some. I'll make a motion to recommend to the township board to approve the text amendment to section fifteen twenty-two sign regulations.
Yeah, they.
One second.
Yeah, they want, they should review it a little bit too, if they want to. May occur to do. Okay. Let me go. Let's take a moment. In a second. Okay. Okay, maybe a second, is that a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on the sign and text amendment. Dan Miller.
Yes.
Tom Wise.
Yes.
Andrew Darian is absent, Phil Bellinger.
Yes.
Nick Holden.
Yes.
Lance School. George Nash.
Yes.
Okay. We're done with the public hearing. We're going to new business. And that is site plan review for three, three, nine, seven, South LePier Road. Okay, Mr. Planner, you wanna?
Very good, yeah, so this is a site plan, uh, review for an expansion project to the lodge for pampered pets. Located at three, three, nine, seven, South LePier Road, just a little south of the township hall here.
Or north.
North, excuse me.
Yeah, we go.
North. Um, so this site received special land use and site plan approvals several years ago, maybe it was two thousand twelve or eleven.
Four years ago.
Four, just four years ago, excuse me, okay, just four years ago, they got their initial approval. And now they're back again for a site expansion, so Pampered Pets, as we all probably know, offers daycare, boarding, and training for dogs and cats. And they are proposing roughly a four thousand square foot expansion and an associated outdoor, um, run or outdoor exercise area for the pets. So I think you all might have the site plan in front of you, and if you flip to page two, um, you'll see it's the area on the very south end of the site that they're planning to develop, everything on the north is existing. And then, so they plan to put on this four thousand square foot expansion to the existing structure, and then also adding this outdoor exercise area, um, just to the east of that proposed structure. So this site plan was very well done, we had all but one zoning compliance point satisfied in their first submission. That only outstanding point was a question to the applicant about the nuisances on site, or maybe any sort of increased nuisance potential with this expansion. And there's a letter in response to that point from the applicant in your packets, it's the very last page in the packet, I'm gonna read it off here for us. So it says, dear Mr. Ben Keller, the lodge for pampered pets at our current location has been in operation for almost four years without experiencing any significant nuisances. We believe use, we believe us to be good neighbors to Metamora and the surrounding communities. We also assist local rescue organizations with their needs, offering training, boarding, daycare, and grooming services to them. Our dedicated management and staff have all been trained on all aspects of the pet care business and maintain a safe, secure, and clean environment for our guests. We pride ourselves in such a short period of time of becoming the premier pet boarding facility in the LePier County area. Our new four thousand square foot addition is planned to provide flexible space for training, additional overflow for daycare, periodic boarding during our busy season and spring break, and space for occasional special events. Our hours of operation are as follows, Monday through Sunday, six AM to seven, six thirty AM to seven PM. Our boarding guests during the stay stay with, stay with their kennels and are taken out individually to our outdoor fence area five to six times per day to relieve themselves and socialize for approximately ten minutes at a time. After our normal working hours, guests stay within their secure kennels overnight. Our daycare guests during the day socialize in both groups within the buildings, daycare yards, and adjacent exterior fence areas pending weather. All daycare dogs are picked up by owners by six PM daily, and the spaces for dogs are empty. If we were to experience nuisances, we would recommend and refer the guest owners to our onsite trainers to work through and resolve these issues. Although we've never experienced these nuisances, if, if training cannot resolve them, we would ultimately ban the guests from future stays at our facility. We hope this letter answers your concerns, and we look forward to assisting the community with our expanded facility, feel free to contact if we have any further questions. So those notes in there about the time that the dogs and other pets are spent inside versus outside really soothes any concern on my end of, uh, any nuisances. And then this other point about if they have, uh, you know, rowdy animals that are having trouble with the training, they will eventually be banned from the facility. So that, those lines there really satisfy my concerns about the nuisances, any potential nuisances. So I'll draw your attention just a few pages before, uh, that letter to our site plan standards of approval. We believe that all you'll see the planning consultant comments for each of those standards, and if reading through those, you'll see that we believe that all of these standards of approval have been satisfied. So I'd be happy to answer any further questions you all may have, maybe we hear from the applicant, um, as you all deliberate, make a decision on this one tonight.
I have no complaint.
Yes.
We just received this print. Thirty minutes left.
Yeah, that's my complaint too. I, I just really dislike getting a print.
How much time and effort did you take to review?
Really sorry to hear that. Uh, quite a bit, Noah and I reviewed it together, actually, and you can see in our twelve-page review here that it took a while. That's a miscommunication between Sue and myself, we got this site plan at least a month ago, I would say. So I apologize that it wasn't shared with you all, that's normally not my job, I don't mean to be a scapegoat, but normally it's not my respons, my responsibility is to bring materials to the meeting, not necessarily ensure. So I think that was an administrative miscommunication.
Whoa, 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 I had nothing to do with that, I held up all responsibility for, you know, my behavior, but I just got it also.
Yes.
It looks like.
It just makes it a little harder to really take it a little. Not that I'm not familiar with the facility, but it's nice to see something on the print.
Right, absolutely.
Is the only thing, Ben, that you have marked number ten here about the elevation?
Yeah, so that was, there was a version of the site plan that I was shared earlier in the process that was very grainy. And just was not the clear, but clearly there's a clear site plan there, I just got a bad scan.
Yeah.
Um, so it was that one and then the point about the nuisances.
Yep.
So it was good when you got it cleared up?
It sure was, yeah.
Do you have anything else to check? Other than, uh, number ten here?
And I think the reasoning for that was that this was, to me, I didn't see the site plan that was submitted four years ago, I bet it looked very similar to this. And the applicant maybe just had their architect add on this expansion onto that existing site plan. Um, I think that's why it probably met all the, um, compliance points very easily, because they already met the compliance points four years ago, is my understanding.
So Mr. Chairman, if I may. The applicant is here, if you'd like to walk us through any of this. Sure, seems pretty cut and dry, four thousand square foot addition.
Yeah, it's almost four thousand square foot, um, what we experienced, uh, in four years, we have really outgrown our facility. Um, the other thing that we had is we're lacking the space to, to do, uh, training, um, adequately. So what we wanted to do is make in addition to this thing that would hopefully resolve all those issues in one. Um, currently, the training that we do is done in the evening indoors in the daycare yards, because all the dogs are picked up at the end of the day in the daycare. And, uh, we have that space available for training. It doesn't, it's not the best way in order to hold that program, so that's why we felt we'd build additional space. We built a little bit larger than what we needed just for training, because we said it'd be nice to have flex space, our holidays, uh, spring breaks, weekends in the summer, we're a hundred percent occupied. So we wanted some flex space, which if you take a look at the space, we basically divided in half. And we have a, a, an area that we can still have dedicated for training, and the other that we can use for the other, we can use for, uh, the boarding, the daycare, uh, overflow for training. Uh, we can also, in the back area, there's, uh, two, uh, uh, folding walls that we can open up, so we can make it a large space where we can have individual smaller training spaces. So we're gonna make it as flexible as what we can, um. I don't know if anybody has any other questions, the yards on the outside, our current yards are divided up into the areas for, uh, boarding. There is, uh, four yards across the back, um, this one that we're adding on is gonna be one large yard, because we anticipate we have enough in there for boarding. We're only gonna need it really for outside occasional training, and that would be done during the daytime also.
So the entrance is still gonna be the one spot?
The entrance is still gonna be in the one spot, we did, if you take a look at the addition, we did put a double door with a possible future vestibule, because who knows what, what's ever gonna happen? But the, right now, the plan is that we're still gonna have all occupancy and all use of that space through a main existing entrance.
Yeah, you got that little flex in the building, you wanna go build another one right now, do it right away. And you get filled up again.
Well, that's a good problem to have.
Yeah. It is a great thing, exactly, it'd be worse.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments you wanna make, huh?
It looks like the, just the exterior finishes are all gonna be the same to match what we currently have.
Yeah, very similar.
The only thing I did, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, kind of, Mr. Biscotti went through the paces, I think, four years ago, and did anything and everything that we asked him to do. And, uh, you know, I've worked every day and own a portion of property, I'd say less than a half mile, I've never heard any dogs or had any complaints. I know, to my knowledge, his closest neighbor would be Mike Curry, who was at last, I believe, last month's meeting with his wife. I talked to Mike, I've never, he's never, I see him pretty regularly, he's never made any complaints, so, uh, I guess my only comment would be that I think Mr. Biscotti does a great job with his existing facility, and he is a great service to the community, I know lots of people who board there and are very happy, so, um, I'm, I'm all, I guess, put a, you know, I'm all for it and think it's a good, good thing.
Yeah, I've never heard any complaints, so, you know. I don't have dogs, I'm not playing with them.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, uh, Mr. Biscotti came in and him and I talked on this project two times.
Yeah.
And, uh, he's very, uh, pretty, pretty good at what he does and communicates very well, he used to be a general contractor, right?
Right.
And so his organizational skills. So the little bit of delay in getting this, I just reviewed it here, there's no additional parking, there's no additional outside lighting. And it's, uh, about four thousand square foot building in addition, and the total building will be less than twelve thousand square feet, so no sprinklers on that. I think he's done, it's up to the board, you guys, it's in your hands, man.
And just so you know, I built the original building myself, and I'll be building this one also.
Good for you, you make it easy on yourself. You're not happy.
Can't complain to yourself.
I wonder how the dog's voice of complaint.
I don't think I hear a complaint.
Yeah.
I've not heard it. Okay. Okay. We got a distraction, uh... I have a roll call vote, somebody else make a motion, uh...
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for thirty-three ninety-seven South LePier Road, uh, the Lodge for Pampered Pets building addition.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, we set a roll call vote.
You have a second there?
Yes, sir.
Roll call vote on the Lodge for Pampered Pets. Dan Miller?
Yes.
Tom Wise?
Yes.
Andrew Derring is absent. Phil Bellinger?
Yes.
Nick Holden?
Yes.
Lance School?
Yes.
George Nash?
Yes.
Okay, you better get busy, we're gonna go a lot.
Yeah, it's gonna be springtime now.
Yeah, right.
Okay, that's for the unvenue business. I don't think we have any communication, uh...
Um, I'll just share one thing down at this point. Well, I'm glad to hear, glad that we got this next site plan in front of you right now if we had some troubles with this Pampered Pets one this month. So this was supposed to be on our agenda tonight, Rolling Hill Stable. Um, it is a...
Let's see, review here.
So in A two, so this parcel's zone A two. So in A two, a commercial stable is a special land use. That's why we were gonna have a public hearing here tonight. Um, the applicant, so our review letter should be included in your packets, they're pretty early. Um, Rolling Hill's commercial stable's right on the top. Uh, the applicant saw our review letter and decided to postpone this on their, they didn't wanna come in front of the board tonight with this many outstanding concerns. Um, so as you can see here, it's a commercial, commercial stable, um, with lots of these run-in shelters and then associated kind of horse pens for the horses to run around in, near those run-in shelters. And then there's also a large main stable area, kind of in the center of the site. So a few of the major outstanding concerns that are highlighted in our letter here is, number one, the plans are not stamped. I think we talked about that last month. There's no mention of braids or a stormwater plan in this, uh, drawing, so we normally don't require full approval from the, uh, County Drain Commission for drainage at the time of site plan approval. However, we'd like to see good progress that way, right? So this is a currently a vacant farm field right here on the zoning map off of twenty-four. Um, and obviously, there's gonna be a lot of new impervious surface on this site, a lot of grading. So what's an explanation for a stormwater, right? We'd like to see one. Um, like I said, it doesn't have to be fully ready for submission to the Drain Commission, but we'd like to see a lot more detail than what we've got on this site plan currently. Um, what else here? We've got, um, the greenbelt along M twenty-four is present. However, it's missing shrubs, which is a requirement of our greenbelts along M twenty-four. Additionally, on that greenbelt point, they are required to do, um, some sort of screening along the property lines that border residential. So right to the south of it, we've got this residentially zoned property, um, with a handful of residential lots there. So there's no screening shown on the south side of the site at this time. There's no mention of the water supply in septic. If you all remember the large septic field that was required for Beth's wedding venue, I'm expecting something similar to be required for this one, maybe even larger. Um, and that could really change the site layout, depending on where that septic field was gonna be located. Screening along south property line, yep.
What about the existing barn on the...
I believe the existing barn is planned, let's see here, it's very close to the, it's in the south corner. Um, it looks like it says it's planned for removal of that existing barn, but they wanna put up a new barn on-site, and then they also wanna build a residence with an attached garage. So that dwelling unit on a site such as this is permitted in the zoning ordinance. They can do that and also get their commercial activity on the site. Um, overall, it looks like this site plan has real potential to be a really cool and nice commercial development. Uh, popular site, most likely. However, this site plan needs some real improvement before you all, uh, consider an approval. So I will caution you, we may not see this one back before November because this sort of thing takes a long time. Noah and I just worked through a site plan in another community, similar drawings. So it was nicely drawn, but it was not stamped, and it was not engineered. And that site plan had waited about four months until it came back to us. So I wouldn't be surprised if this is even December or January before we see it again.
And maybe January twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth.
February...
Right, and there you go, right. But I, I think, I think this applicant is confident, I mean, they, you know, anybody who's submitting for a site plan at this point in the year knows they're not getting a shovel on the ground before snow. So this is kind of a good window for them to wait it out a little bit if they need to. So we'll see, and we'll, we'll renotice it the same way, uh, that we, so we sent a cancellation notice for this public hearing tonight. Uh, Sue and I have already worked on the new notice, and she's worked on a mailing list to the, all properties within three hundred feet. So we'll make sure we do that, and we'll just kind of wait and see when they're ready to submit again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's all.
I do, I do know their intention is to have a great for November meeting, and they have...
Okay.
Instead of one, you're working on, on the thickens these currently, so that's very...
Do we get a full set prior to the...
Absolutely, yeah. We'll figure out how, absolutely. I'm not sure why you guys didn't get your full sets for this meeting, but I'll go back to the...
I'll get them.
I'll get them.
Yep.
Maybe forty-five minutes.
We didn't get the Pampered Pets for the night either, and that's, we're not public, and everybody's here. We don't get a good time to look at.
Right.
I didn't yell them, but...
That's not, no, that's...
It's George and Lance.
No, you guys are absolutely justified in those comments. This is not, it's not okay, so it won't happen again.
Yep.
We thought maybe you were gonna leave us, and... And what, Mr. Noah?
Uh-huh.
And I were...
Not yet, so I'll, I'll introduce Noah. I think Noah might have already walked around and met most of you. Noah's gonna assist me with Metamora work in the near future. I have a very long drive to this meeting. I live in Lansing right now, so Noah's gonna help me out, um, to handle Metamora.
We have both of us.
Don't you handle LePier also?
I sure do, yeah. So...
We're not that much further than...
LePier meets on Thursday nights, and Metamora meets on Wednesday nights. So tomorrow, I'm in LePier, it's a lot of...
I have my family in Oxford, I can spread the word.
I recall Noah Benjere.
Right.
Okay, anything else? Um, Mr. Israel, you got anything you wanna...
Well, yeah, well, we're on the record, I wasn't at the meeting at the Metamora Village. And I did have a conversation with, I believe he's on the Planning Commission, and he owns property, it's own commercial, right here in town, north side of the road. It's an old farmhouse, hundred and some years old, big barn in the backyard. And he wanted to put, uh, he wants to add a lean-to along the side of the garden for storage. Maybe come out, tie a lot of foot. And if he can't do the lean-to, he wanted to know if you put, you know, shipping containers out there. And so the village ordinance would allow shipping containers, right? There'd be nothing wrong with that. But I did tell, and they asked, you know, he's our supervisor in this township, and he was, uh, in the, in my room when we had the conversation. And I did tell the, the gentleman that you need to make application. Uh, if you do, get me an application, I'll review the ordinance. If I deny your request, you can take it to the Zoning Board of Appeals, because that's the avenue you go. And at the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, you could either do the lean-to or the shipping containers. That'd be strictly up to the deal board and not mine, or beg your forgiveness, or ask permission, or any of that. But that's the proper channel to do it, and he was informed of that. No different than I do for your community or any of the other communities that I represent in LePier County.
At first, we might have seen a lean-to over a shipping.
Uh, you and I both. And, you know, the definition of a shipping container is not a lean-to, right?
Right. Exactly.
And again, I thank you guys for letting me share that.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else, anybody got, anyone? Okay, welcome to one more motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Page second, all in favor?
Aye.
Do you vote?
Now, if you start the spring, it says completed by November twenty-sixth.
Yeah, sure.
You'll have a gun for spring, good for you.
Yeah, the existing facility is black tar mason. This is half the size, so I'm hoping coming up to the higher range, obviously.
Good for you. That should really help a lot. Like you said, it's a good problem to have to meet more space.
It's a good problem. Thank you, gentlemen.
Absolutely.
I think the suite is Peter's, and they're, they're shipping containers that they made into several restaurants. They even have a little venue place, I'm seeing weddings and stuff.
That's how they get around the code. What do you think they did to those containers to get...
Very cool.
Yes.
Right.
They hang on their, their range, their length of building, right? It's like, I feel like when the shipping container, you put whatever you like, right? It becomes more thingy, right?
Yeah.
Including them out in the air.
That's normally our response when we get on this. You could do this if you do a lot to the shipping container, but if you don't wanna do anything to it, then it's not gonna be a lot.
It was pretty simply made in L.A.
Yeah.
You know, you take a shipping container in a storage shed in somebody's backyard.
Yeah. Yeah, next one, yep. Uh, Monday's our first week, two thousand.
Yeah, I don't remember where I had the meeting, but I know I have. Well, yeah, we had a...
Yeah, oh, yeah, maybe at the...
We will come back.
I just got there teaching. Did you go to that over... Yeah, I just saw that, it looks like, yeah. Yeah.